The time is 5:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order, moving to our first item of business, closed session. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is 6:00 PM. 5:00 PM. The time is now 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular Board meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular Board meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. Our colors tonight are presented by the Kingwood Park Air Force JROTC. I would ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the Texas flag.
Colors of height, pace, present, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We will now, I'm sorry.
Heart, arms. Host, colors. Height, pace, forward, arch.
We will now observe a moment of silence. You may be seated. Moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. We are so glad to have you all here. A lot of exciting celebrations tonight in UMBLE ISD. We are going to start with our inspiring moment. It focuses on our personalized counseling program. Every student in UMBLE ISD meets individually with their counselor to address academic, education, and career goals, as well as their social and emotional needs.
Over the past few years, UMBLE ISD has really taken a new approach to meeting the individual needs of each and every one of our students. And one of the ways we've really focused on doing that is through our personalized approach to counseling.
So let's talk about what are some things that you think about when you think about the future after high school? You finished? The change that we've seen most significantly this year, maybe over the last few years, is we have seen a significant shift in the social-emotional needs of our students. And because of that, our counseling has also shifted.
It provides an individualized approach to counseling to meet the students' specific needs, to meet their social and emotional needs, their academic needs, as well as their mental health needs.
While we may have in the past seen all of our students and got to know them in some way, this year specifically, we are really working to have that individualized one-on-one experience with all of our students, getting to know them, getting to know their needs, versus waiting for, let's say, a crisis.
When students meet with their counselors one-on-one, they have the opportunity to not only talk about their future goals and plans and goal-setting, but they also have the opportunity to share things with their counselor, to express their feelings, concerns, whether it's about school or personal concerns, and the opportunity to build rapport with their counselor and know that they have someone else on campus that they can seek out in their time of need or if they need help.
So, in the traditional sense, when we had students who, in the past, we were not meeting with, those were those gaps. Those were maybe those students that we were missing, because they weren't students that, you know, they may have had good grades, they may be doing whatever they need to get by, and they were just not on anybody's radar. And with COVID, there's so much that's going on and so many concerns and worries out there that students have experienced. It may not be something they're experiencing now, but it's something that has kind of snowballed. With us being able to meet with them one-on-one, they see that there's a person there, and that we're able to address some of those worries and, hey, I know last year was tough for you, I see that your grades suffered, but we're gonna make a plan. And I need you to come talk to me when and if you feel like you're totally overwhelmed, and so that we can make a plan to make sure that you're staying on track.
We're moving away from that wrong mindset about that people, it's crazy when they go to counseling services, or you're in trouble. It is like, open up the windows and everything, and the doors to let them know, hey, we're here for you, what do you need from us? How we can collaborate together. My office, you're always welcome here, anytime, for whatever you need.
This is a very proactive approach to the way we're handling the well-being of our students. Counseling can be both proactive and reactive. When there's a crisis, counselors are focused on helping the student or the child heal, getting resources that they need. From a preventative or a proactive standpoint, we're working with the student to really create a connection for them on campus, so that if there's a student that maybe we wouldn't have seen, you know, students that fly under the radar, we say, they don't come to the office on their own, they don't seek help on their own, but through the one-on-one experience, we're able to connect them to clubs and organizations or resources that they don't even know are available to them.
The first thing that I got in there, she asked me how I was doing my classes and how I'm dealing with distress. And she told me that I need to make sure I'm focusing on my mental health, because that's just as important as my physical health and well-being.
UMBLE is a district that's driving towards understanding, like, the mental health aspect. I mean, things that's out there, like the, was it UMBLE Parent University? Like, they had theories about mental health, about how to maneuver through that for parents. Of course, we have stuff on, you know, just checking on the websites here and understanding counselors can help you. Like, your actual counselors on campus can help and give you resources and direct you to different things.
I think counselors are our most, our best unused resource. We don't, they're such, it's such an easy way to get to them, and they're there for you.
All right. We're very proud of all of our counselors in the district who have really taken this on to get to know every single student in UMBLE ISD, all 48,006 of them, or wherever we are today. I would like to recognize some of the people who are leading this effort. First, you saw them in the video, Dr. Melissa Lee, Senior Director of Personalized Student Success. Where is she? She's hiding. Yep. And also Ty Hobbs, Director of Counseling for UMBLE ISD. She's right there, too. And they have really taken on this, this effort to not only create the avenue for our counselors to be able to do this work, but also a lot of additional tools and mental health supports and resources for students who do need something more than their counselor just in the office. So congratulations to both of you and all the work that you're doing on behalf of our students. We really appreciate it. All right. Tonight, we have some special guests in the audience. You're all special, by the way, but we have some other special guests in the audience from Memorial Hermann and the Northeast Hospital Authority. One of the defining characteristics of our community is strong support for our students. One way that we see through, see that through is through Memorial Hermann's partnership with UMBLE ISD. They provide physicals as well as sports medicine to our student athletes. So now, beginning in August of 2022, I am very excited to announce that Memorial Hermann will be operating a health clinic on the UMBLE High School campus to provide healthcare services to our students, and get this at no cost. Yeah. Yeah, give them a woo. Yep. I know you're all thinking, what's the catch? There's no catch. Students will need parental consent for services, and parents have the opportunity to opt out of services that they don't feel are best for their child. This will offer wonderful convenience for our families. The center is being built behind UMBLE High School's main building, next to our brand-new cosmetology salon, that's very popular, too. Each will have its own public entrance for safety. The clinic will begin serving students who attend schools on the UMBLE High School complex that includes UMBLE High School, Ross Sterling Middle School, Lakeland Elementary School, and Guy M. Sconzo Early College High School. And over time, we will also hope to add other campuses like North Belt Elementary, River Pines Elementary School. This clinic is made possible through a $3.9 million in funding from the Northeast Hospital Authority. Let's thank them for that real fast. UMBLE ISD provided the land for the clinic, and the clinic will be operated and managed by Memorial Hermann. I would like now to ask Justin Kendrick, CEO of Memorial Hermann Northeast Hospital and Memorial Hermann the Woodlands Medical Center, and Roy Hernsberger, President of the Northeast Hospital Authority, to come to the podium and say a few words.
Well, thank you, and again, Roy told me to make mine long, because he'd only had a few words to say here. But again, I just want to say, this is a huge extension of our mission. Our mission is to really improve health, and our vision is to create healthier communities now and for generations to come. So we very much appreciate the partnership with UMBLE ISD. We are so appreciative of the generosity of the Northeast Hospital Authority and their continued investment and partnership with us, and so we couldn't be more excited to really create this health hub for so many individuals, so many of our children here within the school district. So thank you all very much for the support, and it's really our honor. And huge thanks to Roy and the Northeast Hospital Authority Board.
As Justin said, I've got very few words. I'd like to say thank you to the school district for what you do in our community and for hosting this or housing this clinic. I think it's a great thing. I'll certainly thank Memorial Hermann for helping us further our goal to expand healthcare facilities in our community and services. They've been a fantastic partner to our community, and we appreciate that. So thank y'all very much.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for helping us serve our students whose parents want them to have convenient access to your healthcare services. We would love to join you in front for a photo with the rendering of the clinic that will be open in August of 2022. And also, we just want to be, so thank you so much for this opportunity for our students in UMBLE ISD free healthcare. You saw the video that we're focused on mental health, we focus on physical health, those are precursors to learning. So thank you for making this possible.
Can I get the entire Board to come up for this, please? Thank you.
I forgot to mention it earlier, but Dr. Brown serves on the hospital board, and so we're very proud to have that collaboration also. All right, we're back. Okay, tonight is special, even more special, as we celebrate our Elementary Teachers of the Year. I would like, yes, let's give them a hand. They are superstars. I just need to mention that 97.7% of our students grew in reading last year. That was even during a COVID year, so elementary teachers, you rock. I would like to ask Ms. Lucy Schultz, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, to come to the podium and introduce our Elementary Teachers of the Year.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. I'm honored to recognize the following 21, 22 Elementary Teachers of the Year. When I call your name, if you'll come forward, be recognized, get your beautiful plaque, and then we're gonna take a few pictures. So from Atascocita Springs Elementary, Becky Mines. From Bear Branch Elementary, Brittany Gunn, and she could not be with us tonight, so we will get her plaque to her. From Centennial Elementary, Erica Barrera. From Deerwood Elementary, Natalie Kama Deener. Kama Deener. I've been working on that. From Eagle Springs Elementary, Angela Yoder, who was also a District Teacher of the Year finalist. From Eagles, I'm sorry, from Elm Grove Elementary, Lily Beth Hawley, who was also recognized as a District Teacher of the Year finalist. From Fall Creek Elementary, Kimberly Andrew. From Foster Elementary, Victoria Kozminski. From Green Tree Elementary, Kristy Rue, who could not be with us tonight, so we will get her plaque to her as well. From Groves Elementary, Catherine Hutchison. From UMBLE Elementary, Erica Gonzalez. From Hidden Hollow Elementary, Gretchen Kuchta. From Jackfields Elementary, Stephanie Mulvaney. From Lakeland Elementary, Hillary Crawford, who is recognized as a District Teacher of the Year finalist, and she could not be with us tonight, so we'll get her plaque to her as well. From Lakeshore Elementary, Brooke Musseycheck. From Maple Brook Elementary, Heidi Gifford. From North Belt Elementary, Tammy Davis. From Oaks Elementary, Brenda Dawkins. From Oak Forest Elementary, Brooke Smart, who is recognized as a District Teacher of the Year finalist as well. From Park Lakes Elementary, Catherine White. From Pine Forest Elementary, Maria Taros. From Ridge Creek Elementary, Diana Carr. From River Pines Elementary, Erin Schlosser. From Shadow Forest Elementary, Radona Anthony. From Summerwood Elementary, Courtney Land. From Timbers Elementary, Susan Vento. From Willow Creek Elementary, Emily Porter Roy, who was our Elementary Teacher of the Year. And did a great job teaching virtual last year. From Whispering Pines Elementary, Arena Saboda. And from Woodland Hills Elementary, Whitney Long, who could not be with us tonight, so we will get her plaque to her as well. And take some quick photos.
Okay, hold on. We know you may need to leave to make sure you're ready for your students tomorrow, so let's give them one big more round of applause and congratulations. UMBLE ISD is the best, because they're the best. We're just here to help them out. I noticed that for a while, they were all lined up like in order over there. Did you notice that? I thought that was very elementary teacher-like, yeah. Mm-hmm. They were, well, I think they were even alphabetized by themselves over there. It's like they've done it before. Okay, while we're transitioning, I would like to, the fun is not over. I would like to invite Ms. Jerry Monbarren, Director of Community Development, to come to the podium and introduce our superstaffers.
Thank you. Okay, UMBLE ISD employees go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in keeping UMBLE ISD great. Each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at a school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to an award sponsor. And this month, Superstaffer Award is sponsored by Kingwood Emergency Hospital. So joining me tonight is Claire King. So thank, yeah, there you go. So join me in thanking Kingwood Emergency Hospital. Being honored as the Elementary Superstaffer tonight is Heather Barr, a para-educator from Hidden Hollow Elementary. And her principal, Natalie Wilks, is here, so she can come on up, too, if you'd like. Let me tell you about Heather. Heather is always willing to help in any way she can, all around our campus, and always with a smile. She steps up to support teachers in any way they need, and she's eager to work with our students and help them in their learning, whether it is in the computer lab, classroom, or in small groups. We are honored to have Heather on our team. Being honored as a secondary superstaffer tonight is Jana Murray, a counselor at Summer Creek High School. And Mr. Brent McDonald is here, her principal, and he could join us up front if he would like, or maybe not. Wants to be in the picture? Ms. Jana Murray is the gold standard when it comes to counselors in UMBLE ISD. As both a counselor and a master scheduler, she does so much for students and staff. she does so much for students and staff, day in and day out. Jana has integrity and a strong work ethic. She's also kind, smart, and dependable. She's always looking out for what's best for students and staff, and we are lucky to have Mrs. Murray at Summer Creek High School and in Umbel ISD. Being honored tonight as our Support Superstaffer is Deborah Odom, Compensation Coordinator from Human Resources. And I'm sure he's just here for this, but her supervisor is Rick Gardner, Associate Superintendent. If you want to come on up? So it was difficult to say the words Deborah, because we all know her as Boo. And Boo has been with the district since 2007, and she's been instrumental in the processing of employee pay, especially this year. The HR department processes approximately 8,000 employment status changes throughout the year. This does not include the 7,000 employee pay records that are touched during the summer months in providing general increases for all employees, as well as the various temporary pay initiatives this year, along with the extra retention incentive stipends impacting 6,000 employees in September, December, and May. Boo, who has taken on the role of the Compensation Coordinator since April 2020, has put in a tremendous number of hours over the last several months to ensure every employee's pay situation is as accurate as possible so that the payroll department can complete their final phase of the paycheck process. Boo is very conscientious and meticulous in her work and strives to always do her best in getting things right the first time so that employees don't have to worry about their pay and can continue focusing on meeting the needs of our students. Her knowledge and expertise is greatly appreciated by me, Rick Gardner, as he wrote this, John Cripple, and the entire HR team. Congratulations to all of our superstaffers.
Okay, I told you there was lots of fun to be had, and everybody was special, and we are finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of celebrations. Love it. The next item is public comment. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so following the procedure outlined in the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the Board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with Board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the Umbel ISD website. I believe we have one person who has signed up for public comment. Eric Willing. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eric Willing with Umbel Parents Care, and we've been striving to learn more about the role our Board of Trustees, all of you, plays in the governance of our school district. We are sure that there is so much the average family doesn't realize in how a school district functions and who is responsible for what, so we are hoping to bridge some of that information gap. As we looked for helpful information and insight into the election and appointment processes, we have grown concerned about how little the public has been informed of and included in this specific appointment process. Because very little information has been shared, we reached out to each of you with questions, and our questions to you have gone unanswered. When we compare the election process with this appointment, we can't help but notice the extreme polarity between these options. One involves a public rigorous approach to identifying the preferred candidate, and the other has been done in closed session with no input from the public. We understand the special election has never been held in the history of Umbel ISD and aren't suggesting that one should be held. Our concern is based on the haste and evasive nature of what we have seen over the last few weeks. Information regarding your processes and practices in choosing someone to represent our district have been withheld, even when such information has been directly requested from members of the district you serve. We should know who is being considered to represent us and our children, and we should know what you are looking for in a candidate. You should be proactively sharing that information and providing opportunities for us to ask questions. If a decision has already been made in these few short weeks without informing district families along the way, we hope that you understand the mistrust that this begins to create. We look forward to an open and fair process, to accountability, and for all of you to get these questions answered for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item is comments by individual Board members. Let's see. I will start on my left, Ms. Morrison.
Well, just a huge congratulations to the Elementary Teachers of the Year. Outstanding. Some of them I know personally, and it's exciting to see them up here, so a huge congratulations. Also, a congratulations to a lot of our kids. I understand that I know several sports seasons now are coming to a so-call end, but we've got some that are going post-forward. So I believe it's Atascocita High School in Summer Creek are moving in football. So... And I know a lot of our kids have been in UIL competitions and done very well, so just huge kudos to them.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Mr. Kertschoffer.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry. On October 16th, an Atascocita High School graduate, Madison Carlton, was tragically killed in a sports ATV accident. Madison was 25 years old, and he is survived by his father Kevin, sisters Katie Hannah, and younger brother Harrison, who all went to Atascocita High School. His mother had passed away from cancer 11 years ago. Madison loved the outdoors. When he wasn't at work, he was working on trucks, or fixing his boats, or ATVs, or fishing. Madison's faith in God came first in his life. He attended Northeast Baptist Church up to four years ago, and then his family, with Northeast Baptist support, helped plant a church in New Caney, Emmanuel Baptist Church. While attending Atascocita High School, Madison was involved in the FFA, and he loved welding. Madison was the Assistant Superintendent at Walden on Lake Houston. An endowment has been set up through the Education Foundation in his name. Scholarships will be given out at Atascocita High School in his name this and every spring moving forward. This tragedy is being turned into a legacy in Madison's name. On December 3rd, at Atascocita Golf Club, a golf tournament will be held at 10:00 a.m. Proceeds will go to the endowment. Madison was so loved and is terribly missed. He was my son's best friend and was gonna be his best man in his wedding. And we are gonna turn this tragedy into a legacy for our children in this school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kertschoffer. Mr. Sitten.
Thank you, Madam President. So yeah, kudos to all of our Elementary Teachers of the Year. I mean, we know that that's where it all starts. Middle school wouldn't be where it is without great elementary schools. High schools wouldn't be where they are without great middle schools. So it starts at the ground level with our pre-K, our K all the way through five. And so I couldn't be more tickled to death at the work they're doing and the way that education is evolving, especially at an early age. So Ms. Schultz, you and your team, kudos to y'all. And your leadership and mentorship, you're producing some wonderful, wonderful teachers who are producing fantastic students. So thank y'all for that. Also, yes, to reiterate what Ms. Morrison was saying, it's... As y'all have heard me say this multiple times, we strive for excellence in everything we do, whether it's building facilities, or test scores, or on the athletic fields, or in other UIL competitions. So in the last month, we've had multiple schools compete in the volleyball state playoffs. We've had... We've got two football teams starting playoffs this week. Two teams went to the cross-country state meet. Our band, we had, I believe, it was Kingwood got second at the Military Marching Contest, and Atascocita made their first trip to the state contest. So we do everything we do, and we do it well. We do it with vigor. We do it with pride, something that our entire community can get behind. And with that, I'll leave it alone.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten. Mrs. Parker.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to congratulate our Elementary Teachers of the Year. That was wonderful to see. Veterans Day is Thursday, November 11th, and there will be many celebrations at the campuses here in Umbel ISD. And I just want to take a moment to recognize all of our Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine, Coast Guard, and veterans of all armed services here in the district and beyond. I too, like Mr. Sitten, would like to congratulate our Kingwood High School Mighty Mustang Military Marching Band for winning second in state. So that's a wonderful way to go, Kingwood. And our Atascocita Eagle Marching Band won sixth in state. So great job to them and all of our UIL competitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be short here, because I'm probably gonna take a little bit more time in our committee reports. But I just want to also shout out to all of the nine campuses who took part in the Heart Walk. As you probably have read on the website, we were named the top school district for Heart Walk fundraising in the state of Texas. And our teams raised $30,000. And a special kudo to Oaks Elementary. They actually had the most of the nine teams. So great job for them to be out there and do that. Congratulations to, as last month, with our Secondary Teachers of the Year. This month, we got to celebrate our Elementary Teachers of the Year. Too bad they're not here. Hopefully, they'll look online and see all the nice things that were said about them after they left. But we just love what you guys do and appreciate what you do. And I know Ms. Schultz will let them know that. Anyway, that and a shout-out to... I tell you, very impressive. Dr. Fagan, I know it's something you had put in place a while back with counseling, and to see how it's coming to fruition with your plans. And it's great to see that happening, because it's very robust and very useful for our students across the board. So thanks to all those guys, because that was really great to see. And I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo.
Wow, so many wonderful things to celebrate this evening, from Northeast Hospital Board to Memorial Hermann. I thank them for partnering with us. It's a very important partnership, and I cannot wait to see what it does for the district. Also, congratulations to all the Elementary Teachers of the Year. Wow, it's a big group. All women, though, hello. I did take notice of that. That's why I joined it, and I was like, "Hold the camera up high." You know, it's a thing. And congratulations to the superstaffers as well. Yeah, I mean, one thing that I really wanted to spend a little bit more time on is the counseling service and the spotlighting them on the video today. I think it is really important to help with the mental health. There are so many struggles. Our community in particular has been hit by many things. Harvey... You know, everybody has COVID, but we also struggle through Hurricane Harvey as well. And trauma sometimes doesn't show up until six months or a year after. So I just know, for me, it is really important to... I think one of the counselors says to have a proactive approach to counseling. So as a parent, as a school board member, community member, taxpayer, I'm really happy to see that. Thank you, Dr. Fagan, in that space. And Mr. Kertschoffer, I just want to let you know, I'll be praying for Madison's family and for your son Tyler and your entire family. It's such a tragedy and really hate to hear that. And just thank you to see the scouts here today. Thank you, guys, for joining us. Appreciate it. That's all I have. So our next item is comments by the administration. Dr. Fagan.
Thank you. Well, I made a lot of my comments earlier, but I wanted to say thank you to all of our staff, community, parents, et cetera, who are serving on our Citizens Bond Advisory Committee meeting. We had another meeting last evening, and we have begun the prioritization process. So just remember, folks, if you don't meet the attendance requirements, you can't necessarily be an official voting member. That's Dr. Brown's rule. But... And I blame him every time. But you can attend and be sort of in the fishbowl of it all and watch what's going on to see which projects in the district the committee is contemplating, putting in front of the board and saying, you know, "We would like to provide this input to the Board regarding these projects." So that's going on, and just encourage folks to get involved if you haven't and if you're interested. There's a lot of information on the website. Public Communications does an incredible job of the monthly videos, as well as all of the work around the CBAC meetings and keeping the information available to the public for folks who cannot attend but do want to be in the loop. So just an encouragement there. We have a lot of things going on, and it's an exciting time in the district. The counseling stuff is incredible. And I have to tell you that our counselors are so pleased that this Board approved 504 facilitators last budget season. And that built out the system K through 12 and put 504 experts doing that work and allowed our counselors then to go and focus on personalized counseling needs of our students. And so when you look at all parts of the system and you make sure that everybody has what they need, and it's a system of abundance, it just seems to really grow and thrive. And so we're seeing that happen now. I've spoken with many counselors who have really enjoyed the conversations with students. They've learned so much about all of the things, aspects of their lives, and how they can support them better. And we're just going to continue to build on that. So congratulations to all of them again. Ty Hobbs, Melissa Lee, doing a great job with that group. And one of the counselors, we didn't say she was here, but she was here to support her friend, who was a superstaffer, right? From Summer Creek. Yeah. So we had an actual, you know... We had a celebrity in the midst, and I didn't catch that one. But she was here. I'll get her next time. So anyway, that's it for me tonight. Congratulations to all those Elementary Teachers of the Year. We really do have incredible teachers in Umbel ISD. They are the reason that, you know, 48,000 families want their children here. And I joke about it, but it's true. We're here to support them and doing the very best for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Our last opening item is updates from our Board Associations and Committees. The first committee, I will say, I guess, no report, advocacy committee until we restructure the Board. Next, Ms. Morrison, Audit Committee.
The Audit Committee met yesterday, and also, the Audit Department is continuing their operational audits and continuing with auditing HB3.
Thank you very much. Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Sitten.
Yes, I've got a pretty lengthy report. There's a handful of things on our agenda that we're gonna be voting on tonight. So I'll just kind of go through some of the notes. We brought in a group called Lone Star Recreation, and they do eat, learn, and play outdoor spaces. And there is an agenda item on your... On tonight's agenda to approve Lone Star Recreation of Texas and with pilot campuses as well. Park Lakes, River Pines, Woodland Hills, Elm Grove, Kingwood High School, and Umbel Middle School. Those spaces will be different and age-appropriate. The idea is that the playgrounds on the elementary schools will become the center for that community and really complement the architecture, the mascot, the feel of the school and that community, and something that our community members can take pride in and utilize on the weekends and so forth. As we move into middle school and high school, it gets more into health and wellness and fitness. I know that as our ROTC programs continue to grow, looking for space for them and incorporating an idea of like the American Ninja Warrior-type exercise facilities that are more conducive to older-age students and community members. And hopefully, this will keep people from flipping tires on our tracks and things like that. But it's gonna be really, really neat looking at some of the designs. We're really excited. And so we really try to choose schools on different parts of the district to give us a really good look at what this could be as we move forward. Let's see. We've got an update on the Citizens Bond Committee. Let's see, we've got an update on the Citizens Bond Committee. There were 100, I think, 138 at the meeting prior to yesterday. 70% of those were community members and 30% were staff and employees. So, a really good mixture there as well. An update on the pond that we approved last month. The civil report has been submitted to Harris County for their review. And upon final design and final pricing, we will move forward on that. Some of the discussion items, we've got Uble High School's project schedule. If you've been by there lately, there is chain-link fence everywhere, there is screening everywhere. And, but we are well on track, well on schedule. We've got a pretty detailed schedule of completion as far as the new gym, old gym timing. I believe it's February. Soon as basketball season is over, we will turn the old gym over to the contractor to begin working on the learning media hub there. The performing arts renovations in January. In December, the administration trailers will be removed. The tennis courts will be relocated in February. Cafeteries should be completed in May. The new front should be completed by the end of May as well. So, everything should be ready to rock and roll Phase 1 and 2 by August to start of school. And then, hopefully, we can get Phase, the final phase approved during this Citizens Bond Committee. So, that way, we can get Uble High School finished once and for all. FEMA mitigation at the ISC building is moving along. You'll see a, I believe it's an agenda item for Nash Industries on that. Outdoor learning space as we're moving out of COVID and into the future learning, if you will, adding those outdoor learning spaces. So, we're prepared to move forward with those, a handful of those as well. We've got about $12 million worth of summer projects. There is an agenda item to approve Huckabee Architects to help facilitate those projects. We're working through the appraisal process on Lakeland Elementary. I know that we're getting continued conversations about what happens to the old Lakeland. We are governed by law on how those real estate transactions work. So, we have to get an appraisal and go out and seek fair market value for that. So, we're working through that process. Another thing that's come up because of all the growth that we've had in the infrastructure, you know, when is the Timberwood, Timberforce Bridge going to be ready? What's going to happen to overcrowding at Groves Elementary, et cetera, et cetera? So, we did get some, an overview of some of the conversations that have been had regarding the tenant zones at Groves Elementary and how that could change August 1. So, the consensus was to send that to the Boundary Committee that's been working on Middle School 10, which we're going to vote on a name there tonight, but, and we won't call it 10 anymore. But, so, they're still convened, so we're going to have them look at these options and bring us a recommendation back to vote on. Probably January? Is that what we're thinking? Probably January? Okay. All right. Take a deep breath. We've got one, two, three, four, we've got five agenda items that encompasses all of that stuff tonight. So, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to let Nolan answer those.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sitten. Okay, Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that would be me. Just briefly, I will go over a little bit of what we worked on after the board meeting last time in committee. Essentially, our main topic was to talk about the fact that we voted to appoint rather than elect an additional board member to serve with us. So, in the meeting in summary, we just really reviewed or created a timeline that would work for each of the committee members to make sure we could all be there and effectively work through the process. We talked about the applications, you know, references, doing interviews. A lot of times, what you may not realize is it's hard to get all board members together on our schedules. But, you know, interestingly enough, we were like, wow, okay, the three committee members were all available on Saturday to do interviews. So, we also had interviews this past Saturday. So, the process is still moving. We also, in the last board meeting, if you all recall, we did talk about allowing ourselves up until the December board meeting to effectively make a decision. So, that's basically what we covered in committee. Thank you so much on that, guys. Any questions from my colleagues here? No? Do you have a question?
No, I was just going to comment that all board members were there.
Yeah, all board members actually were able to attend. Yes. Yes, which is even a harder feat at times. Okay, so Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. We, two things. One is the audit, but that's Action Item B and I'll make some comments then because I think some really great, great stuff going on there. But as you'll see, just in terms of most recent Finance Committee, we will be bringing a recommendation to the board in December about which way to go on the health plan, whether to stay with our plan versus move to the TRS plan because we have to have a decision by the end of December of this year. It would take effect in the next plan year. So, we'll have that. And I also want to apologize to everyone. We didn't get the minutes out as soon as we normally would have liked to, but you'll see them tomorrow and you'll have all this information on the various topics we discussed as well as the backup documents and schedules. And any questions, please reach out to any of us on the committee or to Mr. Beatty. He certainly could respond to any questions you might have on those items. We, as I said, Action Item B is going to have our annual financial report. It looks great as it has for the many, many years. And we also talked about fund balance and we were able, for the most recent fiscal year, move another $9 million to our fund balance. And we have well over our 25% that by statute we have to keep in fund balance. And we made some, and you'll see this in those reports, made some moves of funds into assignments, things like continuing to have money for emergency preparatness and a potential impact of ADA funding this year with the virtual versus face-to-face and what that could possibly cost us. So, we're trying to protect for all those things and we're in good shape that we can do that. And I just want everyone to know and feel comfortable that our finances are very sound and that's not something that exists everywhere through school districts, you know, even in Texas. So, it's just take heart to that, that the district is being very good stewards of taxpayer funds. And also, as we voted last time, we're moving forward with the next tranche of the last tranche of the bond financing, $100 million. Pricing will happen probably at the end of next week. We're hoping and thinking it will probably be in the, in terms of all-in interest costs, probably about 2.2% to 2.3%, which that's great. And that will save us money that we can put instead of towards interest but towards actual facilities. And there was a, the webinar for, the TRS webinar was attended by, virtually by 266 employees. So, I want to thank Mr. Beatty and his team for putting that together. And there'll be another one in February. You may, if you're, even if you're not thinking about retiring in the next couple of years, it's really very informative to understand what you might need to think about and how you might need to position things, even if it might be down the road. But if it's in the next three to five years, you definitely should take a listen to this because the stuff can be a little bit, not complex, but complicated. So, that's, let's see, we, the financial report, that, that, that. I think that, oh, and I just, in terms of, I didn't want to pass this by because this is really important. But with going out and pricing the bond, what you have to do first is get a rating. And we were able to get by, two of the rating agencies, S&amp;P Global and Moody's Investor Service. One rated us from AA minus to AA and the Moody's was AA1. And they had very positive things to say in their press release about us. As for instance, Moody's stated that the issuer rate, the rating they gave us reflects the district's growing economy in the Houston metropolitan area with favorable resident income indices and a growing enrollment base even during the ongoing pandemic. The district's stable finances have resulted in the buildup of healthy liquidity and reserves. And that's what I was alluding to just a moment ago. And Moody's had very similar things to say. So, those are good things to hear and these are national and international rating agencies and those are very, very nice ratings. And it, again, impacts the interest cost to us. So, hats off to our Finance Division, our Audit Division for, and the entire staff of this district that keeps us a strong district financially because of how we operate. And it comes back to us in terms of saving money. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scarfo. Mr. Kirchhoff, Education Foundation?
Thank you. Hope everybody's excited for Friday. The Foundation would like to thank everyone who's registered as a player or sponsor in the golf tournament this Friday. Registration is now closed, but there's, we have over 200 players registered, which is more than we've had in several years. I'd like to thank our two platinum sponsors, Insperity and Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott. And we have many more sponsors this year and are grateful for them choosing to demonstrate their full support of Uble ISD by sponsoring this tournament. You can see a full list on the Foundation's website. Not a golfer? No worries. You can still support our educators by participating in our online auction. We have lots of really cool sports memorabilia items this year. Please take a minute, go to the Foundation's website to browse the auction items and get your bids in today. At next month's meeting, the Foundation is looking forward to the final numbers for this year's employee campaign with the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchhoff. Then we have the Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council. I will say no report since we do not have a chair in that spot at this time. Okay, action items from closed session. Item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. Ms. Morrison, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that the board approved the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? The motion passes. Six, zero. Item 4B, Consideration of Appointment to Trustee Position 6.
Madam President, I'm moving this to Mr. Kirchhoff. He's requested to make the motion.
Madam President, I move to appoint Marcus Holmes to fill the vacancy of trustee position 6 for the remainder of the current position term.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Sitten?
Yes, so there has been a lot of questions about the process and so forth. So, I kind of want to repeat some of the things that were said at last month's board meeting on the history and some of the legalities around this and what we've done in the past and then kind of reiterate some of the things you said about the committee.
Thank you.
So, Uble ISD has never held a special election, as was mentioned earlier tonight. Every vacancy since we've been a school district has either been filled via appointment or left vacant. We've had some unusual turnover, though, since 2017. We've had a illustrious board member get promoted within the Memorial Hermann system and had to relocate out of our community unexpectedly. We had another trustee whose home flooded and an investor was buying up flooded homes. And so, rather than rebuild, they sold their homes. So, they had to move unexpectedly. Most recently, Ms. Toomey, family situation, and she moved to, back to be closer to her family in Oklahoma. So, things that happened, life events that had happened. We also had two board members that have gone on to become Uble City Council member and Houston City Council member. And those were situations. One was a timing issue and the other, a council member passed away unexpectedly. So, I think it's a tribute to our board and the work that we do that we are looked upon to fill positions like that. So, in those appointments, though, in the past, one of those appointments was filled via the application process like we just went through. Two were filled, let me make sure I'm looking at this right. Yeah, two were filled without any application at all. We brought back past board members who had retired off the board and brought them back in. We were in the middle of some crucial things and we felt like that that was the wisest thing to do with the work that needed to be done, for them to be able to hit the ground running and know where we were at. So, this go-around, we have, what, about 16, 17 months until the next election. So, what were our choices? Our choices were to, we could appoint. We could appoint without an application process and interviews. We could appoint with the application process and interviews. The election was out of the question at this point because in order to put a name on the ballot for November, it would have had to been called for in August. And in order to have one at the next uniform election date, it had to be within 180 days from the time that we accepted the resignation. And so, the May election was beyond that 180-day mark. So, that's how we ended up with the proposal at last month's board meeting to appoint via the application process. We had a lot of folks interested. And so, the committee met. We developed questions with the input of the entire board. The entire board was present for 10 hours on Saturday as we went through the same exact questions with every individual that put their name in the hat. They were all given the same amount of time to answer those questions. There were no additional questions asked of any applicant to keep everything fair and equitable for everyone that came out on a Saturday to interview. And I personally want to thank every one of them for taking time out of their day on the weekend to come and interview and be engaged in the process. Because at the end of the day, this is a volunteer position and we are a team of eight and there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And you heard the committee reports up here. This is not a one-meeting-a-month type situation. There's a lot of work that is done. So, that is the process. That's the process that we use. That's the history behind it. And that is all I have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten, for sharing that in the detail because I think you have a lot of the history here and know how we've moved through this process before. Do you have something, Mr. Scarfo?
And I'm sure everybody would like to. I just, again, as Mr. Sitten said, I'd like to thank, I mean, there were 19 individuals who applied and put themselves out there. And I appreciate that very much, that they were interested to that level. And I will say, for me, it was one of the hardest decisions I've made. I'd probably put in the top three in the nine years of board service that I've experienced to date. And it was difficult in a good way. The other two were difficult in that it was choosing from not the greatest options. This was very different. So, it was really wonderful to have that luxury, I'll call it, that we had such a wealth of quality folks. It was a very, very hard decision to make.
It was a very, very hard decision to make, and I think a good thing for the district that it was a very hard decision to make. And I want to thank Mrs. Morrison, Mrs. Lamont Dixon, and Mr. Sitton for organizing the process for us, because not only were they assembling the applications, they were making the calls, the reference calls. And it's not like you just call once and you get the person and, okay, go down the road. So, there was a lot of work, and then putting together the questions that we wanted to be, have asked, and then to work, all of us, with the interviews on Saturday. It was a long day, but it was, I think, a very fruitful day. It was a lot of hard work, but very fruitful. So, I thank the three of you guys for all that extra hard work that you each did to get us to that point, and it wasn't something any of us took lightly, and I hope everybody realizes that, I think they would. But I just want to thank all the folks who were part of that process, who were willing to stick their necks out and put their hats in the ring, so to speak. So, thank you, each and every one of you. Appreciate it.
Mrs. Morrison?
And I too want to thank the 19 applicants. You know, it's not easy to come and interview on a Saturday afternoon and understand that you're giving a service, and all these people have a servant's heart to give time to their district and to be concerned and to want to be a part of it. So, like Mr. Scarfo and Mr. Sitton, it is, it's very special, and we had quality people. And it was very, very difficult, but it's wonderful to know that you have those folks out there that want to participate and be a part of this district. And I just want to thank them all, and I encourage them to stay interested, and I hope to see them at the next election.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. Anyone else? Mrs. Parker?
I too want to thank the 19 candidates who got all dressed up on a Saturday morning to come interview. It was, the words I kept saying again and again were, "It's an embarrassment of riches." There were so many great applicants, just really, really great people, and so I'm looking forward to the next election, to seeing some of those wonderful, wonderful people on the ballot. I want to thank the committee. It was a lot of hard work, and I do appreciate the work that the committee did. So, that's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Kirchhoff?
Saturday, we walk into that boardroom, and there's a folder sitting there that looked like a brick. It's about this tall, like that big. And I said, "I hope I don't have to read that before we get started," but you guys did a great job, well-prepared. Wasn't easy, 19 candidates. I love people that put their necks out, and those 19 people that showed up, some had run for office before, many hadn't. I too echo what the rest of the trustees say. I look forward to the next election and seeing a bunch of those faces run, because I think it'd be fantastic. And thanks again to the 19 and to the committee, Robert, Martina, and Nancy. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchhoff. Okay, well, I too would echo that, but first I want to start by thanking the committee. You know, hey, we stayed after a board meeting last time, after being here at 5:00 for closed session. So, we've had some long evenings, and we had a very long Saturday, lots of phone calls, but thank you so much for your due diligence. And I know the other three board members, our other board colleagues, did not have to be there Saturday. It wasn't mandatory outside of the committee, but all six of us were there because we made time to be there, because we knew how important this was, this decision was. So, I thank you three as well for making, you know, making time to be there. It's a tough day, like you said, 10 hours, it's a long time. And the applicants, I echo what my board colleague said, we had a wonderful, wonderful group of applicants. It was not an easy decision at all. Oh, my goodness. Tough one, but, you know, I think we made a good decision for how we move forward. And I would like to say also that I hope many, many of those people do run in the future elections that we have, because your service to the district and potentially on the board is something that, you know, we could definitely use. So, I know we're about to have a vote here, but I think this is the only time I can talk, right, Stephanie? So, I'll say, just in case the vote passes, congratulations to Mr. Marcus Holmes. Okay, board, all those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we pass this five. Yes, and one abstention.
Madam President, so from a parliamentary procedure, we will bring Marcus to the December board meeting to initiate the oath and any restructuring that needs to happen at that point, is that correct?
That is correct. So, we'll restructure the committees and also the board office positions as well.
Okay.
And Swear and the new board member.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. The motion passes, let's move forward. Okay, moving to item five, our consent agenda. 5A, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. Consent. Item 5B, goods, professional services, and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Consent. Item 5C, 2021, 2022 construction and construction-related purchases. Consent. Item 5D, budget transfers and amendments including SAT, PSAT testing, fencing, fuel tanks, police positions, and the resolution for commitments to fund balance. Consent. Item 5E, bond fund transfers and amendments. Consent. Item 5F, waiver of P and I. Consent. Item 5G, tax refunds. Consent. Item 5H, approval of RFP number 2021-005, our general merchandise. Consent. Item 5I, approval of RFP 2021-006, our educational service consultants. Item 5J, approval of RFP number 2022-101, miscellaneous instructional material vendors. Item 5K, architect selection for summer 2022 MEP project at multiple campuses. Consent. Item 5L, general contractor selection for instructional support center, ISC floodproofing project. Consent. Item 5M, general contractor selection for outdoor classrooms project, CSP number 2022-21. Item 5N, general contractor selection for outdoor eat, learn, play project at multiple campuses. Item 5O, additional staff positions for 2021-2022. Item 5P, name of middle school number 10. Ms. Morrison, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move to approve consent items 5A through 5P.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Parker? Okay, all those in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion? All those in favor? Disconsent? Yes, six, oh. Motion has passed. We do not have any pulled items, so moving to our action items, item 6A, instructional materials adoption selection committee. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? The motion passes, six, zero. Item 6-
Madam President, could I say one thing real quick?
Yes.
Back to item P that we just approved, just so the public knows what we approved real quick.
On the name of-
Middle School 10 will be called, where'd it go?
Ridge.
Autumn Ridge Middle School, and they will be the Alligators. Autumn Ri, the Autumn Ridge Alligators, so. Sorry about that, I didn't, didn't-
No, thank you very much, yes. I was surprised no one pulled it, actually, to talk about that. Thank you.
Yeah, the Autumn Ridge Alligators.
Okay, that's awesome. Item 6B, annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2021, single audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2021, and awards for the year ended June 30th, 2020, with consideration of the independent auditor's report included in the annual comprehensive financial report. Do I have a motion?
Do you want me to, okay, do you want, I started to say, do you want me to make the formal motion?
No.
Or do you want the short motion? Does it matter?
Technically, you would need to make the formal motion, but I believe Ms. Dixon just read it out verbatim in the title.
She did.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe we can proceed at this point.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we are going to pause for a presentation before discussion. Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam President, Dr. Fagan. It's our pleasure to be here with you tonight. My name's Lupe Garcia. I'm the audit partner on the district's financial statement audit and federal single audit. We've prepared a brief presentation to take you through the audit process, the audit results, some brief financial statement highlights, and end with some required communications. The senior manager on this engagement was Patrick Simmons. He's here with me tonight. Other members of the engagement included Tom Peterson as the concurring partner. His level of review is our quality control on the engagement. And then we had Andrew Jennet, who just found out today that he passed all four parts of the CPA exam, so we're super excited for Andrew. He'll be licensed here shortly. And Lauta, Karen, and Sean were our associates working on the engagement during interim and year-end fieldwork.
Good evening. So, I'd like to take y'all through the process quickly and kind of explain what we do and what it means to have a financial statement and federal single audit. And so, it starts off in April, and we go through the risk assessment, and we assess internal controls, and then we actually test those internal controls. And as long as those internal controls are operating effectively, then that means that when we come back at year end, stop number three, then we can make a conclusion that those numbers can be relied upon a little more. If you have a weak internal control system, then it's more difficult and a lot more work goes in at stop number three. And so, once we get to year end, about two months after year end in August, so that's when we do the bulk of our testing, we get the data from your financial system, and then we basically look at it and audit those numbers. We make sure that there's something to back up those numbers, and then that forms our opinion on the financial statement to, so that you can rely on those financial statements. And we, during this process, the internal control areas, it's very heavy in the April-May timeframe, but we look at a number of different areas over human, HR and payroll, AP and procurement, and then, of course, IT is a very important area that we emphasize now as, in terms of security around who can do what in the system. And then also tax office, we look at the controls there, other revenue sources such as child nutrition, attendance reporting, and then your financial close and reporting process. So, the three different audit opinions we can give are the disclaimer, the qualification, and the unmodified opinion being the highest level of assurance we can give. And so, I'm happy to report that UMBLE received a unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. It is the highest level of assurance we can give, and it was performed in accordance with the generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. We also issue a report over internal control over compliance, and we did not note any deficiencies in internal controls or material weaknesses or any instances of non-compliance material to the financial statements. Also, as part of this, we provide the federal single audit, and so, since the district receives over $750,000 in federal awards and spends that during the year, it triggers the need for a single audit. And so, this year, the major programs were the Coronavirus Relief Fund, Special Education Cluster, ESER, and that included, so ESER included a few different programs below that umbrella, so the PPRP, Prior Purchase Reimbursement Program. And then the largest of the major programs was the FEMA program, which were for some prior expenditures that now rose to the level of the single audit in this period. And so, we also issued an unmodified opinion on compliance, and there were no instances of non-compliance and no question cost.
So, Patrick just went over the results of the audit. Over the next few slides, I'll go over just some financial statement highlights from the report itself. There's a lot of information in that report, and I encourage everyone to look through it, because we feel it's a very positive and well-put-together report. The statement in net position is the district's balance sheet on a accrual basis of accounting, so this is a, something very similar to what you would find in the private sector. Your assets and deferred outflows of resources as of the end of the fiscal year totaled 1.6 billion. That's primarily comprised of cash and cash equivalents, investments, and your capital assets. You have total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources of 1.5 billion. That's primarily going to be your outstanding bonds payable, any unamortized premiums on those bonds, as well as your two retiree-related benefits, your pension and your retiree healthcare liability. Those are just liabilities you report in your financial statements, nothing you'll ever have to pay out. You're contributing to TRS, the Teacher Retirement System, just like you're supposed to, but those liabilities are there for purposes of determining whether those plans are well-funded. Net position is the difference between your assets and your liabilities and your outflows and your inflows, and that was 77.7 million as the end of the fiscal year. The general fund is the district's main operating account. For fiscal year 2021, total revenues in the general fund were 455 million dollars. Of that, over 90% comes from two sources, property taxes and state aid. That makes up over 90%. The remaining 10% or so comes from other miscellaneous local funding, TRS on behalf as state funding, as well as some federal funding that's recorded in the general fund. Your general fund expenditures for fiscal year 2021 reported 432 million dollars in expenditures. 65% of that is related to instruction and instruction-related services, expenditures that impact students in the classroom. That was 65%, followed by 9% for facilities, maintenance, and operations. Instructional and school leadership makes up 7%, as well as student support services, and every other remaining functional category of expenditures was 3% or less. I do want to point out general administration is at 2%. That's a very low percentage in the public school finance, and here in the state of Texas, so 2% is your general administration expenditures in the general fund. Budget to actual in your report, revenues exceeded budgeted amounts by 3.8 million. Expenditures were less than budget by 13, by 31.3 million. Overall, you did have an increase in fund balance of 9.2 million. That was mentioned earlier this evening. Fund balance is 213 million dollars as of the end of the fiscal year. This is the district's working capital. It's not your savings account. It's not money that's being set to the side. This is how you pay employees, your cash flow that takes you through the remainder of the calendar year, until you start collecting more property taxes. That breaks down into a few different categories. Non-spendable fund balance was 4.5. You had assigned fund balance of 100.4 million, and unassigned fund balance of 108.1 million. Looking at your unassigned fund balance over the last few years, you do have a target of maintaining at least 25% of general fund expenditures in your unassigned fund balance, and you have been meeting that target that's set in board policy. So, you can see there, over the last four years, it's been at 25% of your unassigned fund balance. You have two more budgetary comparison schedules in your report. The debt service fund reports revenues and expenditures. Your revenues were less than budgeted amounts by 2.3 million. Actual expenditures were less than budgeted amounts by 1.9 million. Overall, there was a decrease in the debt service fund, fund balance of 2.2 million. You ended the year with 70 million dollars. That sounds like a big amount, but you have to keep in mind, shortly after the fiscal year ended, you had to make a pretty large interest payment in August 2021. Once you subtract that interest payment from your 70 million dollars ending fund balance, you arrive at your targeted 90, you have 95% of annual debt service in your debt service fund. National School Breakfast and Lunch Program, your child nutrition program, you ended the year with an increase in fund balance of 1.1 for an ending fund balance total of 6.2 million. As part of the audit, we do review the district's accounting policies. They are in line with industry standards. The district did implement one minor pronouncement. There was an official name change to the report, so it's now called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Looking forward, the district will implement- Looking forward, the district will implement GASB statement number eighty-seven related to how it accounts and reports leases. And then the following year, it will implement GASB statement number ninety-six related to software agreements, licensing contracts. Those will now be accounted for, similar to leases, and recorded on the face of your financial statements. The financial statements do include estimates, and so some of the more significant estimates include anything related to state aid, your allowances for uncollectible accounts, useful lives of your capital assets, and then anything related to the pension and other post-employment benefits. That comes from TRS at the state level, their auditors and actuaries. The district has recorded these estimates appropriately in its financial statements. I'm happy to report, we didn't have any difficulties in completing and performing the audit. Like Patrick mentioned, we started this process back in April. So it's a very long process to get through the financial statement audit and the federal single audit. So we had the district's full cooperation. Anyone we needed to meet with was made available. Any information we asked to, to review was provided to us in a timely manner. Any questions we had were answered in a timely manner. So I'd like to thank Mr. Beatty, Ms. Hamm, Ms. Nance that are in the room for their cooperation, and the district as a whole. We didn't identify any material misstatements as a result of our audit procedures. No disagreements that we have to report to you in regards to any estimates or the application of any accounting principles. We obtained a management representation letter from the district at the end of the audit. That gives us some assurance that the district has provided us with all the information we've requested. Nothing's been withheld that would impact these financial statements. As far as we're aware, the, the district isn't consulting with any other auditors or accountants on any matters. And the last bullet on this slide, during the year, we provide information, we provide answers to questions and guidance to the district, but at no time do we feel that we do anything that ever jeopardizes our independence, that we, the district does not hire us as its current auditors because of the way, the position we take on, on any matter. So that concludes our, our prepared remarks. If there are any questions about the report or the audit process, Patrick and I would be happy to take those questions at this time.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Sitten?
Not really any questions. We were able to see this yesterday during our audit committee meeting, and just a great job, as always. Thank y'all for your partnership, your due diligence, and keeping us, keeping us legal. So we appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Lupe and Patrick. We appreciate it. Great work. Is that it? Any other, do you have something? Mr. Scarfo?
Or you want to just-
No, this is it. This is the discussion.
Yeah, I just want to say again, thanks to Mr. Beatty's group, Mr., Ms. Fashawn's group, for, again, great results. Thank you guys for, for your help with this, and your partnership with us, as Mr. Sitten said. And there's a, just so you know, there's a nine-page report that's included. It's not required, and it's not part of the audit per se, but it's, it's, it's provided and gives a lot of great information in terms in general, and, and metrics on the district, and things that have happened over the last year. It's very informative. If you have a few minutes to, to pull that out and read, I'd, I'd encourage everyone to, to look at that and to read it. You'll come away with even better understanding of what goes on. And I'd just say, again, having the clean opinions, the unmodified opinions, that's a huge deal. And particularly with the government programs, because if not, we might lose some of that major federal programs, and in particular over the last year to two years, that's been a big deal. So, we, it's really good to see that we are doing, and there's a lot to have to do, a lot of, a lot of Ts to cross and a lot of Is to dot to, to get that in terms of all those regulations. And again, that's in there, too. So again, thanks you guys for all you've done, and for everybody in the district, because it, it all works its way up in terms of how we can have such solid results. So thank you.
We have a motion and a second. No more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Six oh, the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, our information items. Item seven A, summary report of English learners and UMBLE ISD. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. Our last item, seven B, financial services reports, is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. Moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? Mr. Scarfo?
Madam President, you had asked it. I, I moved this to bring it up at this point in time. I had hoped that we might be able to have a motion, a motion to consider with this, but the agenda was very jam-packed. So I understand that.
Thank you.
What I'd like the board to consider at our next meeting would be a motion that we cancel our membership in the National School Board Association, and that we then refrain also, in addition to that, refrain from going to any of their conferences, seminars, conventions, all those types of things. Because I just don't feel that, based on the letter that they had sent, I know they've since pulled it back, but I don't think they've really changed their, their feelings about these things. I don't think they, they share our values, because unlike the NSBA, our district encourages parents to be engaged, encourages community members to be engaged. We, we want that dialogue, and we want it to be in person, whether it's here at the boardroom, or, or also digitally, where people are, are sending emails, where people may not agree with current board positions or current board policy. That's fine. We, we don't shy away from that, and I think we all encourage that to, to happen. And I want that to, to, to be out there, that people know that that's how we feel. We don't agree with, when they said they spoke for ninety thousand, I forget what it was, school bor, schoolchildren and, I'm sorry, boards and across the country. I don't think they speak for us. And we have, we don't, I don't believe we need to have FBI agents here to, to protect anything, because we have our own protocols in place, our own law enforcement in place, to handle those kinds of things. So it really concerns me when an organization like that comes out and wants to say they're speaking for all the member organizations, because I don't believe, in, in our case, they speak, speak for us. And I would just like us to consider that as, as a board.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Scarfo, for that. I would like to poll the board to see if we want to put this on the agenda for the December Board Meeting for consideration. Because we can't get into the, the meat of that discussion right now. So do we want to put it on a future agenda? Mr. Sitten?
I would vote no.
Okay.
I would vote no.
What's Chris say?
Can we give it some thought? Can we table it and think about, consider it next? Can I think about it?
So the only issue before the board tonight, since this was not posted on our public agenda, is whether or not to put it on a future board meeting. And so the poll is to see if there is enough interest from the trustees themselves to, to merit putting it on a future meeting. But it would not be about whether or not we're, we're entering or leaving, or whatever for NSBA. It would just solely be about putting it on the new future agenda.
So we can say no and bring it back?
You can say no, if you would like. Yes.
Stephanie, we can say no and then bring it back another time. Yep.
To raise, raise it as a future board business item at a future meeting, it, yes. However, it would not be on a future agenda unless either the board president or the superintendent requested it to be on. What Ms. Dixon is doing right now is, under the board operating procedures, how any trustee can request an item be placed on the agenda. So the request can be made again, but you may be at the same crossroads as you are tonight.
So Mr. Kertschoffer?
And I would say no.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
And I, I am a no. Thank you. The time is now eight thirty-nine PM. This meeting is now adjourned.